Everybody, I should pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your government order, will call.
Mayor Westergaard.
Yes.
Stan Camp.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Walman.
Yep.
Public forum when he gets here, I guess.
Okay.
Will you do that?
Alright.
Okay. Consent, do you want to do it? Go ahead.
No, I will be.
Consent agenda, consent agenda, any additions or corrections? It's not being most true approved.
The only thing that I'll request is an addition of a resolution so that we can, what Kay and I didn't realize was the bank wants a resolution to get, to change the accounts, so I'm a signature on the accounts. So, we can do it next time in two weeks, but we thought if we could squeeze in this resolution tonight, we can get that piece taken care of.
We can do that.
Okay.
Make motion, approve resolution number twenty-three. Second. Will call.
Walman.
Yep.
Beckman.
Yes.
Stan Camp.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Okay, we have two building permits. We're both signed. Eric, we're fine. Ready to go?
We need to do, was that what you put on the consent agenda? Do we have to make?
Well, actually, you have to approve. You need to.
Prove the consent agenda first. No, we did this.
Yeah, you just did the resolution.
Okay, well, who's the consent agenda?
So, we'll go.
Will call.
Walman.
Yep.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yep.
Stan Camp.
Yes.
Okay, we have two building permits. Those are due to approve.
On the, on the one with the fence on the south end of it, it doesn't show how far away, how far is he from the property land on the south? Do you know?
Um, no, realistically, no, but it's well, as well as it is.
Well, within the, within the two foot.
The front of the building is back there.
I'll make the motion to approve. Second.
I'll second it. Will call.
Frank.
Yes.
Stan Camp.
Yes.
Walman.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
We have the district attorney report, the children's director report.
Um, well, I'm two weeks in. Um, I guess, I mean, a lot of my time has been spent with learning, trying to get to know staff. Jason and I, he'll kind of go over what, what has been worked on in the last couple of weeks that we've been working on, what we're looking to try and accomplish. As I get acclimated and he's still getting acclimated, so, I mean, I can say we probably have had a few fires that we've had to put out, but, I mean, not, nothing too major, but we keep, you know, plugging away on stuff, so, and if you want to kind of share what, what public works and what you all been doing.
Um, do you guys want me to sit here or do you want me to go up there?
You're fine.
Uh, we received a complaint about a tree at one twenty-eight South Lake Street. Upon looking at it, the whole tree was hollow and dead, so we took it down. Um, we did that right away. Cell two out at the wastewater review was one of the questions from the previous council meeting. We have filled that. Um, it is full. We are continuing with our F one discharge. We don't have concerns about that cell leaking, but we do have concerns about cell one, which is the main cell, one area, which after the meeting, I'm going to see if Forrest has time and will go over there and take a quick gander, um, to see what he thinks of it also. Um, uh, the fountain, we're working on that with Black Squirrel, trying to get that back up and running, um, per the requests. High service pump two has quit working, um, according to the electricians and the people that were here working on it, it died a slow death. Uh, we do have another one on order because it is crucial that we have that, otherwise we cannot put water out to the system if the other one fails, so we always have to have two. So, we are working, that should be here hopefully in a week or two. We'll get that put back in and then we'll be back up where we're supposed to be.
What was that again?
High service pump.
High service.
The motor for the high service pump is actually what it is. Um, we did get a couple quotes, uh, and ended up going with the cheapest one, but also the same person that does all of our, uh, repairs and stuff at the water plant anyways, electric pump. Manhole on lake, uh, we did have a cone on it. Somebody stole the cone. We reexamine the manhole again. It is getting worse. Um, it's not going to be a quick repair. I do have a gentleman, um, from rehab system coming on Friday. He is going to give us a quote on what is going to take to beef it up and make it so it doesn't happen again, and so it's correct, corrected the way it's supposed to be done. Also, while he is here, he is going to suck out our lift station at the, uh, main wastewater plant, as there's a large crust of grease and other debris that, uh, we could really determine how deep it was after Saturday's rain. Um, so, we're going to get that gone and hopefully that lift station will continue to operate the way it's supposed to. We have new scales at the water plant for reading our chlorine uses and our potassium per magnet use. We did discover that there is a difference in the scales from what we were using to what we are currently using now of about fourteen pounds. So, fourteen pounds doesn't sound like a ton, but it adds up in a hurry, so, we're going to make changes and we'll be okay. Um, let's see here. Electrical, uh, department moved the light up at the high school that was right in the middle of their entrance that nobody knew about. So, it has been moved. Uh, the pump in lift station number ten on liquid was seized up, uh, with a pair of underwear in it, so that pump was pulled and the underwear was removed and the pump put back into place. We did discover another issue there. There's a blind flange that had a two, two inch galvanized hole and just a pipe cut out into it. That galvanized has essentially rotted away, so now we're getting just a flat, uh, coupler to our cap to fit over it, so now it's going to stop back feeding and that will save from wear and tear on our pumps in there, otherwise they're just going to sit there and cycle. Uh, VACO did their fire suppression. We're working with them on their meters. Still working on the mud volleyball pit. We just got to hopefully let it dry out some before we continue to move it. Um, when we get to the, the pickup portion, I did contact Carol, I did contact Odeball, and then I did contact the state contract, uh, which is Stivers Ford out of, uh, Waikiki. So, I did reach out to all three of them. Uh, Odeball, it was not in their allotment of what they're allowed, so therefore Carol, uh, when we get that, you'll see it have the lowest bid. Um, Saturday, we did get a lot of rain. Uh, we did have the main lift station out at the wastewater plant stop working. Part of that is there was a power glitch. When the system does a power glitch, it switches over to floats in order to turn the pumps on. Well, when you got a three foot to four foot crust of grease and stuff in there, the floats don't work very well, so therefore I had to run them by hand, got it pumped down, got it switched over to transducer. We were good to go. Um, but once we get that sucked out and cleaned up, that would be better. On the electrical side, they dug a new grave, um, put the light pole up at the library in the parking lot, uh, set the pole and hooked up, uh, new LED light. Fixed the light that wasn't working on the boat ramp on Lighthouse Point. Lots of locates and locates and locates and locates. They fixed the broken neutral by the golf course on highway four seventy-one, the old seventy-one, marked out, called in, locates for, for new services or moving services. They potholed some wires, uh, for Black Hawk Construction, hung disconnect notice, uh, a lot of setup for RagBri and everything else with the pads and the cords and, um, the concert and making sure that we have everything where it needs to be for everybody to have that stuff. And then, uh, we've had a few callouts out at campgrounds for breakers and, um, certain things like that, and that's kind of what we've been doing since the last council meeting.
On the stuff that we did for RagBri, do we keep that separated?
As far as?
Our time and material for that?
I do not believe so.
Because that was part of the stuff we talked about for RagBri committee.
To pay that.
To reimburse the city for the, them, them certain expenses. One of the content needs, we talked about that was, you know, the added police, city workers to do and the staff that are there and stuff. Who come out of RagBri committee funds, so, how are we going to keep that separated or figure out or estimate or whatever?
We can, we can probably work on that and see what we can come up with, I think.
I believe we can come up with a number before the next council meeting.
And just, you guys weren't here, or you weren't here, you weren't here when we talked about them. Just Brian reminded everybody about that. And RagBri wasn't great, but, so.
Yeah, well, we can work on that this week.
Back to the, um, manhole intakes. Are we going to look at the rest of them around the community that needs addressed also?
I do know of three of them, to include the one on Lake Street, so two others that have been brought to my attention from my guys that work for me. We are going to look at those, why he's here in town. The same guy that is sucking out the grease out at the wastewater plant is the same gentleman that's going to give us the quote, so I figure why he's here and we're paying him by the hour. We're going to use him, be using him as much as we can during those hour timeframes.
Okay.
Is, is that the same guy that would do the storm sewer? There's one storm sewer intake that's, and I can't tell you where it's at.
West and sixth.
West and sixth. We've already talked to, uh, one contractor about it, but I can also see if this gentleman would be willing to look at it.
Okay. That'd be great.
And then I also have a, with, with this storm that came through, it came down the highway at nine thirty quarter to ten Saturday night. The water is almost a foot deep. Um, do we have a backup plan as far as pumping out the lift stations? Randy Drosh used to come in and help us with his tanks. He no longer has them tanks. Um, I don't know if we need to be talking to another farmer that has, you know, liquid manure tanks to help us, but I mean, we, we don't want to be scrambling at the last minute, so.
When did he get rid of them?
It's not all finalized yet, I don't think. He sold his business.
Oh, he did, okay. I was saying, because he just did, he sucked out our mud volleyball pit.
Yeah, it's like, any day now they're going to be.
I don't know if, uh, like Zach and Eric bomb over, over Auburn.
Did that be a good one?
I don't know. I think they might be just, just, uh, drag hoes now, but I can talk to Zach and.
Well, I mean, we, we need to have a backup plan in case of an emergency and.
And I don't know who bought.
The city, this was, you referred to mine being on the council that we used the last.
I don't know who bought Randy's. You can ask him who bought that. I don't know if it's public, the name, but I do know that it's all been signed with these about now.
Okay, yeah, I can, we can reach out to Randy and maybe he can give us your insight on that.
Thank you, Jason and Teresa, very good.
Thank you.
And good work for being green in the community, I mean.
Yeah.
There was one other issue, I guess. The city don't, the grass and the leaves got started on fire somehow.
We did not start the grass and the leaves on fire. That was not us.
It could have been an ember or something.
It could have been, but no, that was not us that did that. All we lit was the branches and the tree stuff.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was, you know, miscommunication somewhere, but if we didn't do it, then, because that takes forever to get that smoldering stuff put out, and that's where our issues have come from.
The only, I'm the one that lit it on fire. I'm the one that babysat it.
Yep.
Um, I did push the grass up.
Yep.
And so it wasn't all strung out, but I did not like that on fire.
No, that's a good job getting that burned up and back down to a manageable pile. And I think at some point in time, we had that policy in place that you can review on what we decided to do, that dump the way we did it to pacify everybody, because we want to make sure we have a dump for everybody in town who needs it. At some point in time, you can look at it and see once and why we did what we did that way.
Thank you for doing everything, all of you, for RagBri, Carnival.
If it wasn't for my guys, I couldn't do Hollywood.
Takes teamwork. Okay, we, uh, would like to appoint Trent Iverson as the Assistant Utility Supervisor. He's agreed to serve in that capacity. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Will call.
Walman.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Stan Camp.
Yes.
Thanks for stepping up, Trent.
You're welcome.
Okay, we want to talk about this trench, this five hundred foot, electric service. See what our policy should or shouldn't be.
I think, I think the biggest thing is what we're asking council is permission to bore. Um, I think the property owner is under the understanding that it'll be their responsibility to pay for the, pay for this new service that they'll be getting. And, you know, policy going forward on, on new service, I think we just need to sit down and visit and present to council what we feel, you know, a fee schedule and those kinds of things should be for, you know, providing new service, continuing extending service for, for the electric side of things. Um, I think we have some of that in place. I'm kind of, as being, you know, new, but I think the biggest question is we're asking, you know, permission to have this third party come in to bore the line, because the guys, you know, maybe Trent can explain it a little bit better than I can. The equipment that we have, it'd be better to have a third party bore this extensive amount of line versus trenching it in, correct?
Yeah, we would, our trencher doesn't, is older, doesn't go through, uh, bad soil the best. Roots and stuff like that aren't, aren't the easiest on it, so what we'd have to do is open cut it with our VACO. Well, it's over five hundred feet at the minimum, so to open cut that's going to, it's going to take long and it's just going to settle over time. The easiest way is to get, and I'm not, I'm not saying that quality is the guy to go, you know, I'm just, I just got a bit from him, but, um, it's a lot faster. He'll be in and out of there in half a day and.
So, are we, are we boring this from the existing pole? When I say we probably boring this from the existing pole that's there now.
Correct.
To the northeast east.
Yep.
Back into that flat land open back there?
Yep, he's got a shed back there. I don't know if you even know that, but it's kind of tucked away back in there. He's, he's got a shed that is already built. Basically, he just, he's ready for power. Um, and then eventually in five years or so, he thought he was going to build a house back there too. And so, like I brought up to Teresa, I, I don't know what, what route to go, because technically we provide a service to him right now. Going from the pole where the transformer's on to the shop, we can't bury four hot triplex wire that far. We'll have too much line loss and he won't have the voltage he needs. So, what we need to do is we need to bury primary back there instead of pad mount transformer.
So, after that, I was in the office that day when you come in and I looked and I didn't find anything in our code thing.
Correct.
Oddly enough, I traveled that day and I started looking at some of our rule stuff and I noticed a lot of it's all overhead.
Yep.
And that's how it was done. I also reached out to Bill and he says that we don't provide that second service normally. It's always a customer thing and he said to look up the Dave Schultz agreement, and I don't know anything about the Dave Schultz agreement.
Yeah, that would be probably more where his, Dave's son lives now. Um, I think Kay can probably talk about that more than I can, but.
But I know we, we changed, I know the city, this before our high time of the council, I know the city changed their policy after we ran power all the way out to Hallett's at one time and they never used it. We had all that money.
Yeah.
And I know we don't want to get into that situation.
Well, we have a, we have a similar situation coming up in the near future with, uh, in acreage right north of town that kind of the same situation. We have a meter on a, on a separate pole overhead right now. Eventually, there will be a house and another shop, but it'll be five, six hundred feet away from the transformer again, so we're kind of, I mean, it's good that we're talking about it because we're going to have it come up twice.
So, so are you saying that maybe the council needs to come up with the policy on how we do this moving forward?
Correct.
This one and the new one?
Yep, that's just kind of, I just want, want to know what to tell them, pretty much is that, um, going forward, you know, we'll get it on black and white and can just.
And I think we could probably write up an agreement.
Absolutely.
You know, with what their costs are, what our responsibilities are, and, you know, go from there with, between the property owner and the city.
Yep, and I know.
You know, for the electric utilities.
I know from my, my experience, um, from my past, that a lot, sometimes when I worked in Bancroft, we would, we would pay for, the city would pay for that up and up front, but then they, we would reflect it on their bill, so then they wouldn't have a forty thousand dollar cost upfront, you know? So, I don't know if that's something you guys want to look into or not. It's just a suggestion.
So, like us being banker.
Pretty much.
So, the Dave Schultz agreement, our tariff for the Dave Schultz agreement states that if he has single phase and he wants to upgrade to three phase, which he did, is why he had to pay, but he had to pay everything upfront. And then we reimburse him based on his usage over so many year period.
Okay, so, I'm just asking a question, trying to understand this for a policy moving forward, if you guys don't mind asking a couple questions here. So, I'll, I'll just use Union Avenue for example, and we're moving it way back there, and I look at some of these other farm places where it's run overhead. Is, is the overhead wire not capable of carrying the, is it different wire? How's it?
What you'd have to do is the same thing. You'd have to, you'd have to do a primary wire, and so you'd have a phase and neutral. And a lot of times what we do, we go underground with it and on acreages like his where there's a lot of trees. One, you get rid of your animal issue, and two, you get rid of trees. So, instead of us spending every year or two out there trimming trees, we don't worry about it. And then you don't have to worry about your squirrels, raccoons, stuff like that that causes an outage, so. Underground wire normally lasts longer, supposed to?
So.
You don't have your pole cost, you don't have your wire cost.
I'm just playing, because I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand the high voltage stuff a little bit. So, Mid American Energy or City Lakeview, where we got all of our above poles going wherever, whatever you want to call that, primary lines going.
Yep.
You don't see that all buried.
Well, it wouldn't be cost efficient for us to bury it. I mean, you can buy.
So, so explain to me why this is cost efficient compared to that. I'm just trying to understand the difference. And I, the reason I'm asking that, Trent, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'll take the wrong way. When I was driving up that four seventy-one, I'm looking at a lot of the stuff that City Lakeview services and I'm seeing all these, I'm seeing the main transformer and I'm seeing all these wires, above ground wires going all over with that one main meter in there. And that's what I'm trying to figure out what, why this is different, except for to get rid of the wire above ground.
That's, I mean, that, that's my best answer I can give you is just from the fact that we don't have to worry about tree trimming in the future and we don't have to worry about animals and, I mean, that, that's kind of the reason why we put stuff underground. It's just, I think it looks a lot nicer for starters.
Well, I, I agree.
You know what I mean?
Are you saying, you know, cost wise, is that what you're looking at?
Well, cost wise and what was done in the past is what I'm seeing compared to what we're, look like we're moving to in the future. So, you know, and I can't think of the guy's names properly. Well, where Tyson Quirk lives now, you know, that's above ground all the way until where he paid to have it buried up to his house. I didn't, and I don't understand, I don't understand the high voltage primary, the four, whatever you call it.
Well, so like, like for instance, out on the union, either way, you're going to have to run primary wire overhead or underground, because you can't run secondary wire that far, overhead or underground.
From the meter, you mean?
Yep, from the meter.
So, how do they do this at these other acreages, when they got just the one big thing there and it's feeding all these other?
It's just distance wise, I mean.
Like the patine feedlot, for example?
I don't know distance, I know, um.
And I'm asking to learn.
Yeah, I know like four hot triplex, you can't, you shouldn't bury it over, over two hundred and fifty feet, so, when you go above, I believe you can get a little more distance above, but probably maybe a hundred feet more, you know? But they're not drawing anything either, you know, like the, the waters, the waters and stuff like that, they're really not pulling that ton.
And, and, well, and I think another patine feedlot, I guess, they got that transformer sitting right there, their meter and stuff, and then they're going all the way up to that stylish pit.
Right.
Whenever they're running there.
Yeah, which that's all, I believe our meter's on their, on the port there, so that's all on their side. So, if something, if, for instance, their wire falls or fails, that's.
But isn't that the way we do it on the rule side anyway?
Um, depends on, depends on the situation. Some, some meters are on the poles and some aren't. I mean, it just kind of, kind of depended on, I guess, what we wanted to do at that time, I guess.
So, you're saying that the patine feedlot, any wire coming off of that to, let's say, the stylish place is their own expense. It's their own wire, it's their own expense.
You got it.
So, if they're going to pay me six thousand bucks, what difference does it make?
Well, and I don't, if the six thousand is just reported.
Right.
We have the wire, because that's the top of that.
Correct, yeah, that's, yeah, that's just.
But that would also be, that would also be in the property owner's expense.
Exactly.
So, I mean, you know, yes, at the end of the day, I guess it's a property owner's choice whether they want it underground or overhead. The boring, you know, is us basically subcontracting the workout because we.
Just be so much more time efficient for us.
Yes.
I guess that's why it's a property owner.
So, then do we need to even, all we need is to get permission to, to.
Do the.
Yes, do the boring, not, not necessarily the expense part.
So, the homeowner would have.
So, so the homeowner couldn't hire whoever they wanted to, and they could, right?
They really could. I mean, I guess we don't care who boards it in as long as it gets bored in.
Correctly, correctly.
Correctly, yeah, I mean, we would oversee them, you know?
This is a new point there, I would say.
Other than the fact we might want to come up in the next council meeting and say, here's a rule we propose to use from now on.
Yeah, and I think, I think our leaders can come up with something for us to review, yeah.
Yeah, we've discussed it a few times, because I just had it brought to my attention again today about a different place, so we're, we're in discussion about it.
Your, your, the other one you're talking about is right north of town, isn't that Kevin's old place?
You betcha.
I'll make a motion that we approve. They can subcontract this out as long as the city gets reimbursed for it.
Will call.
Beckman.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Stan Camp.
Yes.
Walman.
Yes.
Okay, purchase a four fifteen truck for the electric department.
Hey, maybe we should back that, but we did, sorry. We approve for Trent, hang on a minute.
This is the truck you gentlemen prefer?
Yes, sir.
And did, is this the same one we already approved, folks?
That was prior to me, so I cannot answer that. Um, I based everything off of talking to the gentleman that I work with and what they prefer. Um, I believe it's probably very similar.
And we're going with the utility bed?
We would prefer to go with a flat bed with the toolboxes underneath, so we can use it for multi purposes, such as hauling wire or the brine tank or, uh, some of the other stuff that we do haul where we prefer a flat bed on it.
That is not included in this quota.
No, we are still working on getting the.
I'm supposed to be getting an email within the next, today or tomorrow about a couple prices on some flat beds, so you'll get them as soon as I get them.
I'll make the motion, we reapprove this.
Will call.
Who was the second?
Dave.
Okay. Beckman.
Yes.
Walman.
Yes.
Stan Camp.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Okay, we have a change order on the one seventy-five Dave project. Looking at the P D.
Okay, so, this part of the project is for the culverts that have not been installed. So, to remove and replace existing damaged RCP culverts with steel casing pipe. I'll be honest with you, I, John was the one who kind of brought these to my attention, so I don't know a whole lot about them. I don't know Forrest. If you can add any insight to them or not, you're not the one, yep, yep, so, um, I know that, um, these were to, there was existing culverts there that were close in the proximity and they couldn't be salvaged, so these are to, to replace that. So, it's an added, my understanding is an added ten thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars to the project, but it's something that we need to do.
I did, this was with John Gibson on this, and it was back when they were doing that, going by Kraus's driveway, the two driveways by Kraus's, and at the time the project was going on, Scott didn't want them replaced at that time, but they needed to be replaced. So most of this ten thousand seven eighty, or almost three quarters of it is, what do you call that? Fee?
Mobilization.
Mobilization fee. Now, I don't know if the steel culverts are better than, the old ones that were there were cement, and now these are steel, I don't know what's better, but, we do, as we can tell, any type will get rain, that water puddles up at that rate, doesn't flow.
My question is, why wasn't that part of the original cost? You know, the, the new culverts were in there, they needed to be taken out and re-put back in, good or bad.
Is this your firm? Are you with V and K?
I am, yes, but I'm not familiar with its culvert.
Right. My only, my only thought process is that they thought that, that those current culverts could be salvaged and it came down to it that they couldn't be salvaged. And then it became, unless, you know, unless it's, it wasn't done at the time that they were mobilized here to do the project, so now we have added costs to bring them back to get it taken care of.
And then you just say Scott told him not to do it.
That's what John, our interim.
Administrator.
Administrator told me when I asked everybody, he said that it should have been done while they were here, most of this fee is the mobilization fee, to get them to come back to do it, because Scott didn't give them permission to do it while they were here. Is what, and that's just what John's told me, I don't have any factuals to back it up, I don't know. And again, Mike does bring up a good point, why wasn't that in the initial bid to put?
I mean, and this thing was there, why, they needed to be replaced. Um, why, why one man is making a decision that he's not qualified to make evidently, because water's puddling. And now it's costing us nine thousand dollars more than what it should.
The other point that you bring up is the culverts were there operational before the thing went in, that ran the trench through there. And now we gotta pay for them to put back new, but we didn't have to do it on whatever road that is goes more capacity back though. Or, excuse me, T C T, I don't know what road that is, that.
Quincy?
Quincy, Quincy, you know, they made it through that culvert just fine.
One driveway was damaged when they took it out.
What's that?
The one, the one by Todd Kraus, that when they took it out, it came out in pieces.
So it was, it was?
They thought it was gonna be okay, but they did in there, it came out in pieces, and we knew that, but I don't know, we didn't fix it.
Fix, didn't fix it, yeah, and I totally have no.
No, and Trinity talked like there was some special tile they had to put under there to make D O T happy.
Well, it's, it sounds to me like there was a mistake made back then, that, um, could have been changed had everybody gone about it and stuff, we, we can't change that at this point.
No, the only, the only question I have is, this has gotta be done. Is there somebody closer that can replace these two eighteen inch steel casing pipes for less money than?
Ten thousand dollars?
Than Jet Drain, because they're coming all the way back from wherever.
Means.
Right.
You know, so if we know we're gonna pay ten thousand seven eighty, is there some other thing we look at to see about doing it for less money? If, if that's what we're.
Power tiling and.
Right, the only thing that I caution that is then the guarantee on the project, um, as a whole, and I don't know what the engineering agreement is with, was it Jet Drain?
Yeah.
Um, with Jet Drain is, you know, for, I mean, we certainly can find different quotes, I'm not opposed to that, I don't know that you're gonna find anybody that's gonna do it and mobilize any cheaper, but that's, you know, I'm certainly happy to ask V and K and see if there's something, you know, that can be done. I hesitate to go outside the engineering firm without them, you know, having it in their plans, but I'm willing to do whatever you'd like me to do.
Well, so are you, I'm, I'm asking, so are you saying that you wanna, that you could visit with V and K to see what was in their plans on this?
I would assume that there's been some type of an engineering plan to put these culverts back in and, you know, a, some type, some type of survey with grading and different things in order for Jet Drain to be able to do this. So I'm sure that there's some type of a plan, whether it was in the plans to start with or now, after the fact, knowing Jet Drain knows that they're supposed to be doing this and this is the cost.
Well, if we're in order to do this, we certainly can look around and ask some questions for sure.
I would think that's a great idea, and to pull them, that whole engineer study back out, that we have.
I can certainly ask some question, I don't know, was Jet Drain coming back here in the next couple of weeks?
Jet Drain will be here to do the insert valve for our water plant that was approved at the last council meeting.
That was part of, them mobilizing for that was part of doing this, correct, if I remember our conversation?
So we're gonna pay a mobilization fee twice?
I believe he cut.
If we wait, possibly yes.
If we wait, we will, I believe he cut the mobilization fee for the water plant stuff down, because he was coming to do the other project.
We just can't get a break.
Well, it's a, it's a bad situation, that was, not, we brought that to the attention during the project right away. I know, I, I remember discussing that at a council meeting. So what, how much money do you think we could save? I don't know if we could save, a couple thousand bucks, I don't know. Is that? But if, if, if we're, I'm going by what John Gibson told me, when I seen ten thousand seven hundred and eighty bucks or whatever was put in there, I was like, holy fuck, that's a lot of money, put in the two piece of pipe. Um, and he said, well, most of it's the mobilization fee, because they have to come back, because they weren't allowed to do it while they were here, and then I dropped it. I don't know if we'll save, I don't know if we'll save any money.
I mean, the mobilization according to the change order is twenty eight hundred dollars, so the cost of the pipe is a hundred fifty-three point forty-six per lineal feet.
Okay, and that probably really won't change the contractor to it, not very much.
Well, that, staying with them, that saves the mobilization, that's one thing, but also, it takes the gray area out of the, about, is it gonna change the warranty status by moving that, having somebody else put it in?
Right, because then you're taking another contractor and you're, you're.
Right.
You're swapping out on the project.
Is that dangerous, Dave, to get, try to do something different out of the agreement we had? All of a sudden you get somebody else to do it instead of the contractor, did that cause us any grief?
Well, they certainly wouldn't warrant work that they didn't do, so.
They wouldn't warrant, but the rest of the pipe would have to be adapted, wouldn't they?
Yeah, like.
Yeah.
We're just talking about two culverts and a ditch.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think I'd be too worried about it. Just the materials you're changing out, right?
Actually, the old materials are gone.
Yeah, so you're getting materials to put in.
Yeah.
So we don't, the county doesn't seem to have any trouble. Down to some of the mobilization for the other one then?
He'll probably increase the price to do that valve with water plant, because they were gonna do it at the same time, yes.
I, I think we should just go ahead and approve the change orders myself.
Not when we do a lot of here, order one change.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second.
We'll call.
Okay, Waltman?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
And we still need to approve change order number two.
So, change order number two was, um, added depth of bore processing, and my understanding is that this work is already done.
Correct.
Um, underground electric utility conflicts determined during construction, a previous agreement between the City of Lakeview and Jet Drain resolved. Fewer tracer wire stations, less than the original change order requesting pricing to twenty-nine hundred, which includes additional labor and equipment. The added length of the bore equates to a payment of twenty-one seventy, the unit for pricing for the bore. Time materials cost for V to him to buy and deliver an extendable valve key to the city on behalf of Jet Drain, so the city could have an extendable valve key by July twenty-seventh, which is, we used it out of Ubatco. Um, so, my understanding is this something, was something that was negotiated with, by Scott?
This was.
The work has already been completed?
This was already discussed at a previous council meeting? This, 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 uh, change order?
Okay.
Scott brought it up, and Jeff was at that council meeting, our utilities person at the time.
Mm-hmm.
And they had to go a foot lower to bore underneath four seventy-one than they, than they planned on.
Under one seventy-five.
Or one seventy-five.
The other reason was it cost a whole bunch to go different.
Yeah, and, and they just went ahead and dug deeper and went across there, and was submitting this a change order, and I brought it up and Jeff Ross said, hell, you're exactly right, they should know exactly how deep the utilities are gonna be before they're bored. And utilities weren't a surprise to him. And we talked about, we talked about it at that council meeting, and told them that we weren't paying for that. I mean, these, these companies can come up with all kinds of change orders once they're on site, I see it happen all the time, I'm sure you see it happen all the time. It's their responsibility, it's the engineer's plans, for their business stuff, and I'm not in favor of paying this twenty-one hundred and seventy dollars, nine hundred dollars to deliver a span.
Right, and they're actually taking the nine hundred dollars off, so what they're asking for is, is the two thousand.
So.
And I don't have, I mean, I don't have a good answer on this, my understanding is this two thousand or twenty-nine hundred dollars was something, it was costing more and Scott negotiated it down, but I honestly, I don't know.
But you, you remember that council meeting?
Yeah, we talked about that, because like I said, not knowing is one thing, but they, they brought the plans out, so they acted like they did know what they were doing.
Right.
So, I mean, I guess, I, I guess I would tell them all right now, you know, I'd just explain to them, well, how's that the city's fault that that changed it?
Okay.
If they wanted to know the depth of the electric wire, we got a pothole or sit in the shop that.
And I think Jeff brought something like that up.
I mean, we do it people all the time, you know?
And I think Jeff brought it up, the fact that they're bidding on this project, they shouldn't have taken the time to come and see and ask them questions, because you guys are more than happy to try and help them out with that, because you guys are good at doing locations.
Yep.
We're really good at them.
It's a lot easier for us to pothole down and find the wire than splice the wire.
Yeah.
And it saves longevity on your wire.
I make emotionally deny that change order number two.
Seven.
We'll call.
Okay, Beckman?
Yes.
Waltman?
Yes.
Stankamp?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
If they wanna negotiate, we can call.
I'll, I'll have a conversation with them, I just need to understand it.
Yep.
Okay, Forrest, you're gonna talk to us about the evaluation of our chlorides in the wastewater?
I am.
I'm sure it'll be very interesting.
So, Forrest, I'll just intervene again, I apologize, I was not aware of those change orders and, so I'll, I'll talk to Bob tomorrow about those and see if we can get some more information for Teresa. Uh, so for the chlorides, the Iowa D N R is up to their, uh, glove letters that they're sending out, and so this is about chlorides, and, uh, it's about their wastewater plant, about the wastewater plant, it's chlorides that discharge from the wastewater plant into the creek. But really, it's not the wastewater plant, the chlorides are coming from, uh, Naples Home Water Softeners, School's Home Water Softener, Care Facility, uh, and our water drinking water, our drinking water plants. Where the chlorides are coming from, it's coming from the salt, so, if you have a home water softener, you dump the salt in there and in the softener, and there's a chemical reaction that happens where the calcium, the hardness part, uh, switches with the salt, the sodium chloride, remember high school chemistry? And so the chloride, uh, the sodium goes in the drinking water, the calcium is exchanged with the calcium, and the sodium goes in the drinking water, the calcium goes into the sewer, and the chloride is along for the ride, so chloride that you put in your, sodium chloride, the chloride ends up going down the sewer when your water softener home generates. And, uh, it generates at your home, so chlorides are like you would think, like salt, when it's dissolved in water, it's really hard to get back out again, so it goes through the wastewater plant and ends up in the stream, and chlorides then are detrimental to aquatic life. So the D N R statewide is crack, cracking down on chlorides and the wastewater stream, and so what this report is looking at is trying to figure out where the chlorides are coming from, the water plant, we're pretty sure of, but some other sources as well, seeing if we can figure out where the chlorides are coming from, seeing if there's something we can do to keep the chlorides from getting into the wastewater to begin with. And then the second part is to do a study of the stream to see if we can get those limits raised that the D N R is imposed, so that we can get underneath those limits, because the D N R, they look at statewide kind of stream background, the chloride, the sulfate, the hardness in the stream, and if we can do site specific, we can maybe raise those limits up, so it's kind of, how do we get the salt down that's going in the sewer to begin with, and what can we do to raise those limits up from the wastewater discharge? And your permit limits, just to give you some ideas on numbers, um, they're saying four hundred and fourteen parts per million is what they want for a thirty day average, and a maximum day of six hundred and thirty-three parts per million. We went and tested the, uh, discharge from the wastewater plant in August of twenty-two, we got a result of six hundred and thirty-six parts per million. We thought, okay, let's test this again, maybe that was just a one test fluke. And Jason went and tested that, uh, here in June, and it came back at five hundred and sixty-eight parts per million, so, better, but we're not getting that average of four fourteen, which is what we want, so we're gonna, see if we can get that four fourteen raised with the stream study, and see if we can get the chlorides from going down the sewer to begin with, so that, uh, we get that number lower that's coming out of the wastewater plant. So, the goal of this study is to look at both of those. Um, the compliance schedule for the D N R is not until November of twenty twenty-seven. So, we've got some time to come up with a plan and implement that plan, we've got four, four years to do that. But by September one coming up, uh, the D N R is saying, well, we'd like to know, what are you looking at? Where are you planning to do it, and we'll put that letter together with Jason and with Teresa, but it's basically going to be to the D N R saying exactly that, we're gonna do some stream studies, see if they can get it up. And we're gonna look at the water plant and other businesses in town to see what we can do to, if the chloride's going down towards going to the wastewater plant, so.
So is our wastewater plant that we just recently did not designed to help take this out?
Chlor, no, because you, chlorides, the only way to get it out would be to send that water through a membrane, because chloride is dissolved in the water, and no one can get the, millions of dollars to get the chlorides out once it's in the water down at the wastewater plant. So nobody in the state is doing chloride removal at the wastewater plant, they're all tackling it in the system to get it going down there in the first place.
So, like, I, I read your stuff here, we, we know we have the large water users in town. The res, are, are we expecting our residents to not use a water softener in our town?
No, no.
And does the D N R have different parts per million for areas with hard water compared to soft water that's going into the system to start with?
So all they care about is the concentration of chlorides that leave the wastewater plant, so, uh, but the hardness in the stream, and there's, there's some other things that go into that number, that four hundred and fourteen parts per million limit for that thirty day average, and it's how, what's the hardness in the stream? Sulfates going to that equation, which seems kind of weird, but sulfates go into that, and the chlorides, the background chlorides that are already in the stream. And so you do some testing, how well does the, the water mix in the stream? So we look at that to see how it's mixing in the stream. So there's a lot of things that we look at to try and get that four hundred and fourteen to be something higher.
Is this four hundred and fourteen a statewide number, or is it specific for Lakeview?
Uh, the number that is statewide number is three eighty-nine, and they gave you a little bit of credit going from three eighty-nine to four fourteen, because that three eighty-nine is a creek that you can dump across, you know, where your wastewater plants, all the flow, you've got a little bit of background flow, uh, during a drought. flow during a drought already in that. So they went from 389 to the 414, just a little bit. So yeah, that 389 minus what's in the background flow, that's a statewide average for everybody unless you do a stream-specific study and say, oh, our stream is different than, you know, the normal background that's coming in statewide.
So when did they come up with this number? This, how correct? Is this something relatively new, or has this been in works for some time?
No, this was put in place last fall. So, yeah, so, I don't, draft permit came out in November, December, somewhere.
So basically, these new plants are going in there, there's nothing special that they could do to anyway, right?
No, there's nothing that, and it doesn't matter your type of wastewater treatment, you can't handle the chlorides unless you would put that through a reverse osmosis process for all your wastewater flow to get the chlorides out, or a majority of it, the chlorides out. And so I'm not aware of any cities that have chloride issues that they're trying to tackle this at the wastewater plant. It's all in the water softener.
And this discharge location, is it right at the end of the pipe where we discharge? Or can we go a mile downstream where it connects with our, our overflow of the lake, you know, to get the numbers more average dialed, or?
So the number that they want would be from the discharge right from the pipe into it. That 414 has to be measured at the pipe going out. Now, what we can do with the stream is look downstream and back that up and say, oh, our stream isn't gonna be impaired as much as you think. It can handle more than, higher than 414. And here's the science behind that, that higher number.
So how long will it take to monitor this before you come up with an answer?
So we're, yeah, 2027 is when we need to be compliant. So we're looking at, you know, Jason's gonna help with a lot of the testing for this, and we'll go and visit some industries. So it gets, it may take six months to a year.
One thing that I'll add, and I don't know, so Ken, you asked, how long is this chloride thing? It came out and do, started hitting the wastewater permits about 2012, 2013. And now it's going for circle for everybody. They, when it first came out 10, 12 years ago, it was isolated to specifically the Raccoon River to start with, and then now it's expanding.
Is this just an Iowa DNR thing?
Yes.
Yes.
And we would not have done anything different at the wastewater plant if we, if we had this information earlier or not. We wouldn't, you wouldn't design that plant any different.
So obviously, we know that our homeowners aren't gonna change their habits, and we don't expect them to, the school, the car wash, the care facility. I'm not sure about Evapco. You know, so we, I mean, that's just common sense that they have softeners in place for the soft water. And I think, I think you even said Evapco uses soft water for testing some of their equipment. I mean, so they need that soft water because we're in an area where we have very hard water to start with. So what's our, I mean, hypothetically, they don't change anything, and we don't convince them to change. What, what, what are we gonna do going forward?
So a lot of it is, it's not quit softening, that's not the answer. But it may be that the home water softeners, and I don't know if it's Coligan or whoever is, you know, sets up their regeneration. And a lot of times, they're regening the softeners, you know, they're on a timer kind of thing. And they're regenerating on a timer versus based off of, you know, more so based off of the softness of the water. So it's, sometimes it's a conversation with whoever's servicing these softeners to change how they're regenerating them. And sometimes it's, everybody regenerates their softeners on Mondays. Well, if we can stagger this out, you know, throughout the week, then we're not getting these spikes. And all of a sudden, we're testing when, you know, they're regenerating on Monday, and Jason's testing on Tuesday, and all of a sudden, we're picking up this, where, you know, this chloride, where we spaced it out, it would kind of level that off. We don't know yet. There's a lot of things that are still unknown. But yeah, we can't tell our homeowners to quit softening.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out, basically, what we're spending $14,900 on is for you to tell us that we have homeowners that are gonna be, need to space out their water softener. We need the school, Evapco, the car wash, and care facility to lower their water softener usage, or we're not gonna meet this. Because I haven't heard anything else that you're gonna tell me how to, how we meet this yet.
So we're gonna do the stream study. So we're gonna go out and we're going to see what the mixing zone is in the stream, how, how quick that water mixes. We're going to test for every, the background in the stream and, and test more for, from the wastewater plant. Because right now, we just have two tests of wastewater plant with those chlorine numbers. The water plant is also a source of the chlorides because the chlorides, the salt is used to regenerate the nitrate removal facility. So right now, we have no idea how much chlorides are going down the drain at the water plant. So we're gonna put a testing protocol together for Jason to figure out, okay, how much of this is coming from us? And if it's a significant amount coming from us through the water plant, what can we change operationally at the water plant to bring that number down? So those, those are the bigger parts of the cost. And then the rest of it is just getting some information from, you know, these industries, and like the school, and, you know, that, and the care facility, you know, how soft are they doing their water? When are they regenerating? You know, you know, how does their system work? And is there something that we can do to, you know, change how they soften their water to not have as much of it go down the drain?
Well, and another part of that is also, if I understand, is a, is a report to the DNR that says, you know, these are the steps the city of Lakeview is making, these, these are the results that we received. Can we raise our number, you know, the compliance numbers that we need to have to get into compliance, and/or the timeframe at some point, even if it's 2027, to say, these are the steps that the city of Lakeview is making to try and get into compliance so that they don't, you know, cut us off at 2027 and say, you haven't done anything?
Right. Yeah, that's exactly right, Teresa. If, you know, if we go through all this and the answer is, all the homeowners need to soften their water half as much kind of thing, well, that's not an acceptable answer. So then we go to DNR and say, okay, here's all the things we've been doing. We need some more time to, you know, look at other alternatives, whatever that might be, depending on the results we find. And so this is, this is really, you know, all this information go to Iowa DNR and say, here's all the things we're doing, here's what we're looking at, here's where we're at, kind of thing.
But we're making the attempt to try and get in compliance if we can't achieve that.
Right.
We don't have a choice, really. Don't DNR.
No.
Yeah, if you only would. Don't put nitrogen in the water, but now don't put, now don't put chloride in the, the.
Yeah.
So now I'm gonna ask you a really tough question. So you guys, is Beaster Kim the only engineering firm that's doing this in the area? And the reason I'm asking that, we've had since I've been on the council the last year and a half, we have not had good luck with Beaster Kim. As you can tell with a couple of change orders, and that's just some of the stuff that's just brought up tonight. Is this the firm that we want to do the study?
They're the ones that did it ago, and I would think they would have all the plans.
How's that turned out for us?
I don't know, but.
I'm just, I'm just asking you that. How's what we're doing turned out for us? We still got a warranty that's still working.
It's still working.
And might have a leak in cell one again.
May I comment on that?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I, this is for you, a question for you as well.
Are there other engineering firms out there doing this? Yes. In my previous employments, I have used Beaster and Kim with satisfying results on this, especially in the mixing zone study. They have some people that are very well versed with it. I can't, I can tell you some of the other engineering firms are just as good. I just have personally never worked with them.
That's good information.
So what you're saying is, this is different than the one who, a different subject matter than designing a sewer plant?
Correct. It is a total different beast than making a sewer plant work. This is trying to figure out, they're gonna send somebody out in the middle of the stream with waders on and some dye going through, and they have this little tool that does this thing to see how much it mixes. And they do all this calculation stuff, which is well above my expertise and well into theirs, that I don't understand it. They have worked for me in the past and had my limits raised with my other towns.
Do you know what your limits were at the other town?
Uh, one of them I had at 464, another one, we're at the 386 or 384, whatever it is.
39, yeah.
Um, another one, we were at 529. And the DNR's answer to me on how we fix this for this small town was hook up a rural water system. That's the answer I was given. Um, I don't agree with that. But Beaster and Kim worked with us very much, and we've worked with the DNR and their waste load allocation group. And we had that limit raised from, I believe it was 464 to 1529. However, it costs us 150 feet of pipe and going to the big sewer compared to the little sewer. When you go to the bigger body of water, you get a bigger number. When you go small body of wati, water, you get a small number.
Well, and right now, if my understanding in the last two weeks, we have two wells.
Correct.
Of which we cannot use simultaneously.
Correct.
And mix our water together potentially to maybe bring some of those naturally occurring numbers or, you know, the, the nitrates to a level that maybe we don't have to use so much to take the nitrates out in the, in the treatment phase of it. So, I mean, there's, there's pieces and parts to this that, you know, need to, to, to be looked at as well, you know, on the infrastructure side of it, I guess.
I'm gonna make a motion that we use Beaster Kim to do this particular study.
Second? I'll second.
Roll call.
Waltman.
Yes.
Steinke.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes. Thank you, Forrest.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Good luck. Try to make the DNR happy.
Yes, that's, that's hard sometimes. We'll give our best shot.
While I'm thinking of it, we need to say Stan.
Yeah, I see that. Okay.
It's just a little.
Yeah.
It is. Did I not include in your packets a copy of the ordinance?
No. 69 Kim?
There was a change in it, yes. It was adding the public streets, was it Vine?
That parking lot.
Was it Vine Street, public parking lot?
Is it where the blue recycle trailer is? That public parking that we put back there?
I can go up and get copies of it quickly.
On McClure Street?
Between McClure and Vine? Yeah, yep, yep.
Yes. So that, it was adding that to the ordinance, and that was the only thing that we added.
Right, about like no boat or RV storage or parking there. Right, in that parking lot, yep.
Is our, is our Crescent Park Beach area included in this?
Don't believe so. I'll go, go up and get a copy of it quick.
The boat raft, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, the boat raft is included in it.
Okay.
If you wanna go up and, if you wanna move to the memorandum of understanding, I know Kate can talk on that, and I will go get copies of the ordinance.
Can you tell us the change? This is beneficial to the city.
It is. And it is a big change. So the Department of Revenue, instead of the Department of Administrative Services, is now taking over our, what we used to call the DAS program, which is where if somebody leaves and doesn't pay their utility bill, we can file with the state and get their state tax refund to cover any back bill that they have left with us. And we have used that extensively. We've had very good success with it. However, now that the Department of Revenue is taking it over, they're asking for a lot more paperwork. And it's gonna take some more time because you, you have to upload all your files again or create a new file format that they're requesting the files to be in. We feel that we can, can do that and get it done, but they're also asking for this memorandum of understanding, and it needs to be approved by the council in order for us to be able to submit this. And it has to be submitted, I think, by August 16th in order to be a part of this program again. So we really, we do want to continue. And all we need is to approve the agreement and then, again, upload our, or reload all of our files. Because as long as we have our customers sign that service application, we can, for an indefinite period of time, as long as they file taxes in Iowa, state taxes, we can try and collect to get our money back.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Steinke.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Waltman.
Yes.
I think we'll wait for Teresa to get back on her building position. Randy, we changed the time. Public forum's over, but if you wanted to say something, I would certainly allow you to. If you have something to say to the council.
All I have tonight is to drop this off for you and the council. What's over?
All right, we'll do that.
I was your last one, but you were.
No.
No.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Yep.
So I'm gonna sort of, since we're making that change, are we gonna need to redo, did we, did you guys first read it?
I don't know the answer.
We just did one reading the last time.
We have to change it, huh?
Do we have to change the ordinance if we're making one change and blew the parking lot on the ordinance that she's giving?
You all have to ask her. We have to publish that ordinance yet.
No, we haven't. John didn't think so. We've only done the first reading.
We did a first reading.
Okay, well, we can, we can publish it as amended, and then it'll become effective as of the date of publication.
Okay, so then we're able to wave.
We can approve this, now we can turn around and wave this.
Wave the third reading.
A motion to, a motion to approve the ordinance as amended, and a motion to suspend the rules to wave the third reading.
Right.
Kate, did you write that down, all them words?
I wrote motion to approve as amended.
Pretty close.
Motion to suspend the rules to wave the third reading.
Do that have to be two separate motions?
Yes.
Okay. So do we wait till she gets back?
Yeah, give her a couple minutes. That was a safe, we didn't rush into it.
I'll give a RagBri story then. We had so many great comments by writers. It was like a well-oiled machine, RagBri was. The city staff was phenomenal, the 62-plus volunteers we had. It couldn't have gone any better. And thanks to everybody that helped out with RagBri that day. It was a great way to showcase the city of Lakeview. And I heard from numerous writers how well they liked Lakeview. And also, we got another card from a team that really liked the way we had it laid out and stuff for the writers. So I think all the vendors did pretty well that day. It just went off without a hitch. It goes to the city staff and, and. Kudos to the city staff and, and volunteers that we had helping out with it. So, uh, we have a wrap-up meeting coming up, uh, Wednesday, I believe, and then, uh, Matt, the director of Drag Ride's coming, we leave by the forty-eight, uh, for a wrap-up meeting also. One of the vendors said, uh, we came in number two as far, he judges how well we did, um, on his sales and the vendors that follow him, and he says we were number two and the only reason we were number two instead of number one is because the last meeting town of, in, of the route, it was so damn hot and miserable that people just stayed in town a lot longer than they normally would from moving on to, uh, Davenport. So, um, anyway, kudos to the city of Lakeview and thank you very much for everybody's help, right down to.
I think everybody, everybody on the committee did a good job.
Yes, yeah.
Well, right.
I was impressed, so I thought it went as smooth as I've ever seen anything go in that large of a capacity, yep.
Yeah, and, and it, it helped that Hannah had, was, had all that experience with sit and sample and all of that stuff because she sure used all of that experience with the vendors and, and so forth, so that, that really helped. And it was a great, uh, way to come in, hopefully, on your first day.
It was a fun day. I, 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 it was, it was, it was a good day, so.
I just talked to nobody at the, the road right by the key, who I talked to, thought that this town was bad, they thought, ooh, kick it out of the park.
Yep.
Everything was done, it was organized. Kudos to the Drag Ride community, both.
Totally agree.
We got some different wording on those ordinance from.
Yep, oh.
Out of the word of the motion.
Okay, so the only change is?
Be number five. The only thing I added was, and this, John Gibson had contacted me and said that he, this was something he forgot to add, so, um, I went ahead and added it. Um, it was the Vine Street Parking Lot. Basically, it's, it's the same exact thing as what the top says, it's just adding that, the Vine Street Parking Lot to it.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance sixty-nine, ten.
As amended.
As amended.
I'll second.
We'll call.
Okay, Waltman?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Stankham?
Yes.
I'll also make a motion.
Does it matter that it's not on Vine Street?
It's in between Vine and McClure.
McClure is that two-block street on the east side of the elevator.
Does that matter much if it's like right in the, in between Vine and McClure?
The parking lot?
Yeah.
What are you saying, the parking? Do you wanna add?
It's the same parking lot, yeah.
It's the same parking lot.
I think it covers it.
Deve, did you wanna?
I'll make a motion to.
But you can just add where the recycling containers.
With amendment.
Within the.
As amended?
Yeah. That would, that clarifies it.
As long as you leave the recycling trailer there.
Right.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, this is just for parking of the.
Yeah.
Trailer.
So then.
We could, we could add, I mean, we could place it Vine and McClure if you want. I mean, I guess this is what John, I, I apologize, I didn't, yeah, this is what John gave me and he called it Vine Street, so.
That's what John gave, yeah.
We'll just, we'll just put it Vine and McClure.
Yeah.
And what streets have come up over, also?
What's the one that goes last one here?
Fifth Street.
Fifth Street, Vine Street and Fifth.
It's not on Vine, you can't access it from Vine Street.
No, you can't access it from McClure either.
Yes, you can, can't you?
No, you have to go to the. Yeah.
So do we wanna call it Fifth Street Parking Lot?
Fifth Street Parking Lot between Vine and McClure.
There you go.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay. And I'm gonna make a motion.
Just suspend the rules for the third reading?
Yes, to waive the third reading.
To waive the third reading?
Right.
Okay.
So second?
Second.
We'll call.
Okay, Waltman?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Stankham?
Yes.
Teresa, we already did the I've Department of Revenue.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, now we wanna talk about the utility billing clerk.
Do you need a motion to approve the ordinance as amended? Things you waived is the third reading?
Is that, is that all in that one, oh, you did, you, we did the first motion and second. Did we do a roll call vote with that?
Yes, we have.
As amended.
We have the fir-, the second reading as amended, then we have a motion to suspend the rules.
So you need the third one?
For the third reading, to waive the third reading.
Right, so now we need a.
You need a motion to approve the ordinance.
Right.
Right, I'll make it.
Who was second? Mike?
Carole Basile.
That's what happens when you have a early meeting.
Muller?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Waltman?
Yes.
Stankham?
Yes.
Kay, you want to fill, bring us up to speed on the billing clerk position?
Okay, so Kay and I, we did, I mean, it was advertised and we did conduct a couple of interviews. As we were talking and in my two weeks in, um, I guess Kay and I feel, and she can provide her opinion, that we probably need to possibly re-advertise and think about it being a full-time position. With the last couple of weeks and me being a little bit more, you know, getting acclimated to the position, what her responsibilities are, what, you know, my expected responsibilities are, what we're thinking is utility billing clerk, you know, responsibilities are going to be, I think that, one, if we re-advertise as a full-time position and it comes with benefits, then we're gonna get a completely different pool of candidates than what we would have with a part-time position and twenty-five to thirty hours per week. So that's where kind of Kay and I are at, so I guess we're seeking approval. And I know, I think you guys discussed this possibly back in May, that this potentially could be a full-time position. Um, we also don't wanna spend the time training a part-time position and then we decide six months down the road that, that, that really needs to be full-time and then we're looking for a full-time person. Um, and if that person that we were, had a part-time was just really seeking part-time. Um, so I guess Kay and I, um, are asking council approval to re-advertise the position as a full-time position.
And you guys will pick out a mail-in, then we get a couple of council on the, really?
Whatever you.
You would like.
The council wants.
So, did we not have any good part-time applicants? I don't even know.
Well, so when we advertised, um, before Teresa was on board, we just advertised for a part-time temporary. We didn't advertise for, you know, a regular.
Full-time.
Full-time person or even a regular part-time person. So, I mean, we, we interviewed the three applicants, um, one of them, we were, uh, we, we felt would do a good job, um, but there, again, we also felt like if it is, if we are looking for a full-time person, advertising for a full-time, regular full-time person, you're gonna get different applicants and you're gonna get more applicants to choose from. And if it is going to be a regular full-time position, then you want somebody who's looking for full-time versus somebody who only wants part-time.
I think we discussed that at.
We did.
Our meetings and that we're gonna make to Teresa right here.
Right, yep.
So.
That decision.
Yep.
I'm gonna play Dale's advocate a little bit, if you don't mind. Teresa, you've been here two weeks, right?
Great.
And I know anytime you start a new position, there's a lot of stuff, extra stuff thrown at you.
Right. Yep.
Once we move to full-time, we can't go back away from that full-time.
You're right.
And I know we talked intensively through budget season and, you know, we, we know we need some help, obviously, and there was a couple, twofolds for that additional help. But is it too early to justify a full-time to part-time is what I'm asking. Because once you, the way you handled stuff so far, you didn't agree with things. We don't need somebody sitting there going like this.
I don't disagree, I, I don't disagree with that statement. I mean, I see everything kind of, you know, the way the last couple of weeks have been, I mean, I know Kay's been fairly swamped, but she's also doing additional duties that she's been asked to do as well. Um, I don't, I don't disagree with that statement either. Um, kind of trying to get acclimated here, yeah, the last couple of weeks have been extremely busy. If you took a look at my desk, yeah, I've had a lot coming at me. Um, so just trying to understand different projects and different things and, you know, where we're at with, you know, staff and those kinds of things. When we discussed it, you know, what are gonna be the needs of, you know, if and when the community center comes on board and what those needs are. Um, there's certainly a lot of things here, you know, it's City Hall. I think we can certainly find enough duties for this person to make sure that, that they're, you know, kept busy, justifying, you know, the full-time. I'm more than happy if we wanna wait a little bit longer and make that decision a little bit, you know, closer down the road. And, you know, I can certainly try and, you know, if Kay feels that she, you know, I've been trying to help here and there, it's like, you know, hey, there's some stuff I know how to do, um, that I can, you know, pick up some of the, the stuff where she might be getting a little bit swamped. You know, there are a lot of interruptions in the day, um, various, you know, times of the day. Um, so I can see where, you know, some things, you know, even myself, you know, just, just trying to learn. And I certainly have been relying on Kay to answer a lot of questions just because she's our knowledge of, you know, source of knowledge and as well as, you know, council and different things, so, um.
Kay, I guess I got a question for you. When we have our yearly audits, we always get ding them, how we handle the money because of same two people. Tell me if I'm saying this wrong, that, that thing, that's not the best policy, I guess, what I'm trying to say?
Distribution of duties, right.
Yep, yep.
So, if we would happen to go with that, would we take care of that problem, whether it's a part-time person or a full-time person? Does that, does that solve our problem if it is a part-time person?
Can I, I'll, I'll be quite honest and frank, you will probably always have something on the audit on separation of duties unless you have a staff of a zillion, um, just because every auditor that I've been in, um, always has that question, even when I was working in the county auditor's office, it was always a question of separation of duties and, you know, you can always try and do your best with different things of how your processes work within the office on separation of duties. And yes, will a third person, I can't say part-time or full-time, it's kind of depends on, on the day of what they're doing. You know, right now, Kay has kind of got the brunt of it all, um, as far as, you know, taking in receipt management from the customer, so she's got the money there. She's, you know, doing the payroll, doing, you know, putting, you know, writing down the claims and then writing checks. If you can separate some of that stuff, or at least then there's a, a checking body, which I can, you know, do some of that, um, then you, you alleviate, alleviate some of the questions of the auditors on your separation of duties. But honest, to be honest and frank, we'll probably always have that ding on, it'll probably never go away unless you have a staff attend. And that's not possible, so, you know.
So would it be due diligence if we wait just, and you guys kinda separate what's going on and kinda have a list of what duties you would expect from this third person?
We did the job description, you know.
Right.
Every, I mean, we've approved the job description for the utility billing clerk, for the city clerk and for the city administrator. So, I mean, the basic job duties are listed out in each of those job descriptions that we approved.
So the, if, if you went with a part-time one, that was a thirty-hour position, what'd you say?
Well, the, the thing is, you know, when you talk part-time, if you're talking they're doing the utility billing, the utility billing during the last two weeks of the month is not part-time.
Right. Uh, see, that's, that's what I'm getting at. Are, are we talking a huge difference here except for the benefits part, really?
Which is huge.
Which is, you know, a big deal, but.
We're talking another twenty grand a year.
And what, what were you talking about per hour of twenty-one dollars?
Kay, what do you think? You're the ones who's throwing all this stuff on.
Right, I think it's more than a part-time position. I think that there's enough stuff that comes at us throughout the day, throughout the month, um, and will continue to come at us that we can keep a person busy full-time.
Especially with the I've Department of Revenue changing all the people.
Yeah, just one more thing.
Well, and you, you talk about, at least for the next year, the lead service line inventory that we have, that we've sent out to surveys, but beyond that, we haven't touched it. You know, this, I envision that this, this position will take on those duties to input into this massive spreadsheet all of the information from the surveys and help guide Jason and his crew to go out and see, okay, where, because every service line, whether it's in-service or not, has to be evaluated. And so, you know, that's gonna be a large task, um, to take on at least, you know, and that's due in October twenty-twenty-four, but, you know, I'm sure that there will be other things that are added to us, but, you know.
We're not getting any smaller.
Great.
Doesn't appear that way.
So, I mean, it's certainly up to you. I mean, you know, if you want us to wait a little bit and see.
Down the road. The more I think about it, it's not fair to, if we hire a part-time person, we've got that part-time person there for six months to a year and then say, we really need a full-timer, you know, now they're looking for a little guy too.
Their expectation is that they get the full-time guy.
Right, there's a lot of kinds of people do apply that way.
Yep. Like we had the council, we had, we got an extra guy at the campground and the campground's never been so good. Just needed help and this council stood up and said, we gotta hire some help, and we got it. And the park looks, campground and parks, it's never been.
So you're thinking, I mean, you're up here quite a bit, John, so you're thinking we need a full-time person?
Well, I know part of what Kay does, 'cause she does, you know, you just don't touch her desk, you know. But I, I, she does ninety percent of what she does, she didn't do the day she got hired. Everything just changes so fast.
I agree. Why, I.
None of us know what they do.
Keep a person.
Well, we can't burn Kay out on her breath either.
We don't wanna burn anybody out.
Now we're sticking Teresa here, she's gotta pick up the pace and figure.
I just know when we were talking and we were going through this, all the way from budget time, we talked about, you know, and we knew, as back when Scott was here, and we knew Scott needed some help with Kay.
Yeah.
And because there wasn't enough time for him to get out and do his stuff. And, you know, a part-time person back then was fine and now all of a sudden we're moving into a full-time person, it's only been eight months ago. That's, that's all I'm saying, and then now we have a new administrator and we have a new su-, utilities superintendent, assistant superintendent. But, you know, once, once they get their role of things, things should roll a lot easier is all I'm saying.
And we're expecting Teresa to go out and see what's going on these days, what we did in the past, so, then she's by herself. I just think we're throwing a lot on. From what I see every day, it's always busy, busy. There's always customers coming in, it disrupts everything.
And the ones.
And I know, we, we talked about budget, we had extra money for the budget.
Yeah, but I don't know, I don't know, I'd have to go back and look at what we, I mean, it's a lot of that extra money in the budget, it's proof of God.
Oh, yeah.
It's a, Mike and I think, we were, we talked about how this COVID thing has changed everything around for salaries and.
It has.
And, and like I said, I'm sitting here thinking, yeah, they should know what we need. And if I, if, to me, if they want a full-time person and they could, you'll be working out the job duties and work together as a team, just like Jason does with his team now, that you guys will work together. We're not, we want you to come in and keep everything running smooth. Because, like I said, to me, I'd be curious, Kay, how many people walk in, oh, Jesus? You know? I, I know that's a long question, but you see what I'm saying? It takes some time where they.
I know that's a long question, but you see what I'm saying? It takes some time, whether you have one person walk in or a hundred people walk in.
Right.
That, that's the unknown factor.
It is.
You got the sign down there by the bike carts, that could be monitored better. I'm just.
Yep.
There, yeah, there's lots of things that, you know, I think, just in my two weeks here of observing that, you know, and she's even made comments, yes, even the sign, we just get what we have to get on there, on there, you know, do we do things with the website a little bit better? You know, I know we don't necessarily manage or own it, but, but that's a potential that we could probably get access to the website and do some of our own additions and changes and things like that. So, you know, there's twenty-some years probably of files that we can probably go through and kick me out.
Well, in my opinion, I think they know more about it than we do.
Right.
I do, and, and I would.
And if it's, if it's a major concern about the budget, I'm more than happy to sit down and see where this person, you know, I kind of worked with the budget a little bit, I, you know, of where this person get paid out of, would it require us to do a budget amendment? I don't know that at this point. If you, you know, another two weeks probably isn't going to.
Well, we've got some stuff that, I don't want to say it the wrong way, but in our budget for pretty stuff, that we can allocate for personnel stuff that would help offset on a roundabout way to do the pretty stuff.
Because part of, part of that salary could come out of it, you know.
And it would.
I, I can't see either one of these ladies hiring somebody full-time and then, as you said, having them later on sitting around this third person filling their thumbs, because they're not, they don't have enough work to do. I think that they'll make sure they have plenty of work to do. And I'm sure they will.
And John's right, when we've got the extra staff that.
You've got stuff got done.
Stuff got done.
That's right.
I mean, in that, in the, and I think you're talking about Parks Department, not the campground. Parks Department.
Parks is campground and park, yeah.
But I think it's made a big difference.
Huge difference. We struggled in the past, but now we're getting stuff done that, not that they didn't try in the past, they're just, there's a lot of people.
Aren't we still looking for another utility worker?
Electric guy.
Electric guy.
You got two applicants?
I think the applications are due Wednesday, if I remember.
I want to make a motion that this should become a full-time job.
I agree.
And how would you guys do the interview and then have a councilman, kind of, Mike or Dale sit in on it? And then the three applicants that you did interview, whoever they are, reach back out to them and say, now, this is going to be a full-time, you still want your name in the hat? Yeah.
Yep.
Does that make sense? Yep. So you're not interviewing them yet?
Right.
We have a second on that motion?
I second it.
We'll call.
Steinkamp.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Waltman.
Yes.
Before we adjourn, I've had issues with the recycle trailer at the park in the, when it gets full, Brian Elliott texts me and the garbage ends up in his front yard, he doesn't like that, so. I've been looking for the council, is there a way we can address that issue?
Is it cardboard or is it?
Well, they'll think your garbage and throw it out.
Well, we don't want garbage in recycling.
No, but there, but there are people that are leaning that they're dumping it in, and when it's full, then they just throw it outside and the hands in his yard.
What about, this might be the right way, wrong way, but you know, we talked about different locations, huh? Or the location, what about a short chain link fence in that area?
Yeah, we've got a chain link fence up the junk or the dump, the water plant, we could take out our sewage pipe.
See what I'm saying? That would stop the wind blowing it out of the south.
Wouldn't end up in his yard.
Right, and we could do it, I'm not very good with corrections, on the north side and the east side, you know, so it's still easy access coming in from this street, not to come in there.
I will see you.
And, you know, with us changing the bag fee, that should help eliminate people trying to throw garbage in there.
But it, I guarantee you, every ten days he texts me and says, there's stuff falling in my yard, what are you going to do about it?
So maybe think about, maybe that's an option for us, is that, I don't know where else to put it, to be honest.
I don't, I don't either, but I thought maybe council might think about it, because he's going to want to, what are we going to do?
I'd, I'd say we could get that fence put up, that's, that shows that we're going to try, if it doesn't work, then we got to build a little plan B. At least then if they don't, we're making an effort, try to control this. Maybe put a sign there, which won't make a difference, but please, please don't dump on the ground or something, you know.
Recycling only.
Yeah. Because I know we talked about the cardboard part getting full. Yeah. And instead of bringing a second one in, talk to the businesses about not dumping their cardboard in there.
And we did send a letter here, I don't know when it was, a year ago?